The magic hour has struck and I'll officially call the November 14th, 2018 work session to order for the town board. Let the minutes reflect that all of the town board members are present. We have a number of staff present and we have a group of distinguished audience that some will be hearing from momentarily. We have the October 10th minutes before us and would entertain a motion of approval of those minutes.
I move.
I'll second.
Moved by Rob, seconded by Paula. Any discussion on those minutes? See no discussion, those in favor, aye. Opposed? Thank you Lisa, as always, thank you. The October month reports are mostly in, we have two areas that might be a little bit delinquent. One is personnel, one Public Works, and one the assessors. So I would expect that by Friday those will be in everyone's hands. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest, Mary Nguyen. This is a discussion regarding 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard. I'll invite Mary to come to the table. This matter has been a held item before this board and Mary has some, I believe, some additional information to share with the board this evening and I'll ask Mr. Castell to further introduce this item.
Thank you Tony. We had a public hearing on Mary Nguyen's request for a special permit to allow 12 units to be installed at her property 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard. That took place on 6-6 and then on 8-8 we had a work session where the board looked at the number of units it felt comfortable with and that number was three as the discussion occurred. Since that point in time, Mary, one of the conditions was also that you had a chance to look at the plans, the final plans, to see how the three units laid out. And since that time, Mary has worked with her architect to prepare plans. Plans were submitted to the building department a few weeks ago, I think, and they've been reviewed by the, I don't know, the process of being reviewed by our building inspectors. In addition to that, Mary also had her architect submit additional plans the department requested. They have been submitted and I thought it was a good idea in talking to Mary the other day that she come in and see you to go through what she has been proposing for the three units and then also talk about possible alternatives based on the layouts to what's occurring in the house for your review and discussion. So with that, I'll pull out the plans. I'm not sure if you can put them in great detail.
Maybe we should wait to go through the plans.
We can do that if you'd like, yeah.
So the house originally had 20 rooms and it had the white building which wasn't being used because those of you who walked through it with me remember it was full of dead animals. That had been an outhouse and a kitchen for, so it had been used as a kitchen and an outhouse as well as then there was another kitchen in the house and then there was another kitchen in another part of the house. But, so it had 20 rooms plus the white house and then the entire area that was recovered, if you recall, where there was a second out, I call it an out as it was an indoor outhouse, and walking into the basement. So, a lot of square footage. I looked at the original documents, not including those spaces, and it was, it is about 5,400 square feet plus those recovered areas. So we're talking maybe 7,000 square feet of physical space. And one of the things that I started thinking about is what is the long-term goal for this building and what is the long-term goal for the town of Penfield and what Penfield wants in its community? And what is the long-term, what is, what is the future of a building that has been created in a certain way? The space has been created in a certain way. So, as you recall, when we were talking and you had concerns about the 12 units, those of you that walked through the building with me recall me saying that I am, I'm interested in doing this because I live next door and that I didn't own the building when I went through it with you. It had been purchased in foreclosure by someone else. I purchased, I was purchasing the contract for the building if I was able to create a hospitable environment that I would want to live next to. I did not want to live next to what the intention of the owner was, which was to put Section 8 housing in there. It's an easy mark for Section 8 housing. And that concerned me because we really love our house and we've, we bought our house in foreclosure and we have renovated and those of you who know and drive by 2565, it's a beautiful building. It's lovely. So, I do not, I, I want to have a neighbor that is of the caliber that I, I want to, I want to keep my home in and it's very important for me to have the home be beautiful. So, we proceeded, I talked to Jim about how do I, how do I create a situation where the town has the ability to approve something that is not two-family or three-family? And that is right in the records for the preservation outlay district. So, the goal of the preservation outlay district is to preserve the historical and architectural character of certain sites. And, and all of you know if you own a home how costly it is to manage a home, especially a home that's as large as this, that sits on an acre of land, that has, it's a, it's a massive structure with 57 windows and nine exterior entrance doors and four porches. Requires a lot of maintenance, requires a lot of money to do that. And we want it to look nice. And I'm sure you want it to look nice because people who drive down Brown Croft Boulevard and there's like 28,000 cars a day that are driving down Brown Croft Boulevard that are looking at this house. We all want it to look nice. But the historic status gives the board the opportunity and the ability to do an overlay district. It allows the board to do that. And in fact, in 2000, when the town made its plans, it specifically stated that, that the suggestion from the architectural firm that consulted with you suggested that you do overlay districts in the Brown Croft area because it, it suggested that the value of the houses was reduced, the residential houses was reduced in that area because of the traffic. And it suggested to do high-density housing. So I've, um, I'm sorry, excuse me. I hope I brought the copy. Maybe I've left a copy at home. This goes just through some facts for you folks about the population, how it's grown from 1960 to 2000. So it tripled in population and 30,000 commuters pass through the area. Issues are excessive noise levels, poor property maintenance, light pollution. It goes through some facts of the community and I think I left a sheet home that specifically spoke to how the consultant at the time stated that this area was definitely going to be devalued, the properties in the area were going to be devalued and they suggested high-density housing. And I pulled it off of the 2000 and I think I left it at my house, so I apologize for that. Yeah, this is it. It talks about, I'll wait till all of you have it. I mean, the economics of the situation is the property has to be able to be maintained. I listed at the top the, the property, all of you know who own a house, you know the issues with properties. The comprehensive plan identified to accommodate higher-density residential opportunities in the area in the form of apartment complexes in the southwest quadrant and conversions of single-family homes along Brown Croft to multifamily structures. That was a recommendation in 2003. Now, the only person who still sits on the committee that was here at that time, there are only two people who sit on the committee that were here at that time, Tony and I think Linda, possibly were you with?
I was not in the plan. I was not on the committee.
Okay. So, there were two people that are still here now that were there at the time, but...
2000?
Committee.
They saw opportunities as other types of residential opportunities. They saw threats as future development, the church and the commercial expansion. A Brown Croft community church in 2003 was planning to add an additional 99 spots. I did not realize that they were planning on buying the Cassidy property and just taking that whole corridor across from us. They continued to expand and the suggestion was for them to join their parking lot with faith Lutheran. So directly across the street from us are these massive church units, massive church units. And down the street is, at one time was a super-duper, now it's a church. So you've got three massive church units in that area. It's a very commercial area. And you can see on the back page, they have the, the area shaded pink is an idealized representation of the developmental, developable land in the area. So the recommendation is not to develop the green space, but to develop the pink space. And our house, 2567, and my house, sit in this area. Those are the areas that they, they recommend are affected and should be developed in a different way. So, it's going to continue to grow. It says right in here, "Traffic will make residential properties along Brown Croft Boulevard less desirable for single-family living." And I understand what you're saying, that you're willing to make it a three-family. But that leads me to the next concern that I have, which I started to do some research when I have the opportunity to make a large physical structure into only three apartments. You have large physical apartments. And this is an example of changes in intentional communities. And it is, it's a community that's different than my intention for the building. It's the whole article, but basically it shows a picture of...
It's just, it's just one arti...
It's one article. It shows a picture of the, the type of community that would live in a large apartment. And it's different than, than the vision that I first came to you on and it's concerning to me to be forced to have only that option, particularly if I were to sell that building because I am meticulous in what I do and I am meticulous in how I take care of things. And you don't know who is going to be the caretaker after me and if they have such a large physical space, I mean, that's a huge building and the layout doesn't allow like three-row houses. It, that wasn't a possibility in that house. So, as I shared with Tony, the brilliance of the small studio apartments is that you can offer a type of housing to an individual that is working, that is a professional and is, is the kind of neighbor I would like to live next to and I'm sure many of you might also agree that that would be an ideal neighbor. Then I started doing some other research on what's going on in the world. So, just lately, there's a big trend that home sales are down and this was just on the news today about how there's been a dramatic reduction in home sales just in a short period of time because interest rates are rising, costs are increasing, people want more mobility and they don't want the responsibility, they may not be able to afford the responsibility. So smaller housing is very, very popular and it's, it's even called Podmints and, Podmints and, like in Seattle, they're doing 150 square foot apartments that are becoming very popular. They're, Seattle's got kind of a boom going on with that because they have tight space and also because it's affordable for people. But if you look at this statistics, if an individual's making $37,000 a year, which I'm sure many of you know of people, young millennials who are starting out that are making between 37 and 50,000 dollars a year, and you add in the, the costs, on the second page, I put in costs and I'm assuming this individual, because they're making 18 dollars an hour, they may not be paying, getting all of their insurance covered, so they may have to contribute to their insurance. Since I'm a business owner, I know how much it is and $358 is the least expensive policy that you can buy right now from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Then they would have to contribute to the HSA. Hopefully they're saving for their 401K and they've got their dental coverage. They have very little left. They, very little left, $16,000 left that they can now spend. So when you're looking at how much can an individual afford for housing, they can't afford much, the individual that I would be focusing on would be the one that would be making 50,000 dollars or more because my apartments would not be 450 dollars or 500 dollars. They would, although if I am, am put in a position where I have to have a large unit and a bunch of people come together and rent, that will be the kind of apartment they'll have then. They'll have a lower cost, but I won't be able to control who's living in there. I, I could get any number of scenarios. So I, my focus is the individual that is in a higher income bracket, but still doesn't make enough money to buy a house. They don't, they cannot afford to buy, the average home in Penfield is 180,000 dollars. They would not be able to buy that house. But they would be able to live in Penfield, they would be able to spend money in Penfield, they would be able to bring money into Penfield. They are a contributing individual in society. They probably would be involved in community activities in Penfield, possibly clubs. Who knows what this individual's desires are, but it is an individual that I'm familiar with and I'm going to give you an example. This is a building, a 3,600 square foot building that I bought in 1986 in Vermont. When I bought it, it was a four-family. I, I lived in Connecticut in the time and housing was, rental housing was unaffordable for me in Connecticut at the time. So I bought this building not having a really clear understanding of the difference between Vermont and Connecticut. I still own it. I had years of heartache because it was a four-family and I rented two families and, unfortunately, often a family, I just hid my deed in the back to prove that I owned it. I still own it. Unfortunately, often, if you, if you have a, a working mother with children, she may not be home when the kids are getting back from school. The kind of damage that occurs is different than when you have a homeowner. It's a different, it's a different clientele. So I struggled with that clientele for years. I had many, many evictions. My husband and I did not understand, you know, why people didn't take care of the property and we didn't understand why they didn't pay their rent. We didn't understand why they got a pet when they were told they couldn't. And our attorney finally sat down with us and he said, "You need to change your strategy. You need to split that building up. You need to make small units. You need to rent to people who can afford to rent from you. Separate yourself from the client base. You need to get a client base where people have an income, where they can afford to pay their rent, where they want to respect your property." This is a beautiful building. It was built by Governor Hartnett for his daughter. He built the whole neighborhood, he had a lot of daughters. He built the whole neighborhood up, it's all mansions around there and Governor Hartnett Partnitz's house is now a bed and breakfast. But he said, "You just have, you want to provide a beautiful home for someone who doesn't want to take care of a beautiful home. So you need to give someone a beautiful home that you can afford to give them." And we have not had a single eviction since we did it. And, you know, I've been doing this since 1986. So I have a lot of experience in, in renting to a variety of different individuals and I have experience in renting to studios and it is a very successful model. And you get a very nice client. Great, gracious, grateful, appreciative clients. I mean, I, I just had someone move out and another, the woman that moved in, she's retiring. She's sending me pictures of how pretty her apartment is, how, how love, how much she loves it there, how nice it is there, how nice the neighbors are. And that's, that's, I think, what Penfield wants for this historic building, is, is a good community. I think that's what you want, but I want to understand what you want. I want to understand what your goals are, what you see as the future for this space because it's going to live on beyond me and, and all of us.
And all of us, yes. So you've given us a lot of material, Mary. And what I would like to be able to do, whether you could get a copy of that to us, not, not the house, but the folder below?
Okay.
Which is that article, yes. If, if we could get a copy, I mean, if, if Jim could give, make a copy and get that back to you?
Yeah.
Or, or if you'd like to make a copy and get it to Jim?
You can have this.
If that, if that works. And if you'd like, we can make a copy and get it back.
You can have it. It is just one potential situation that could happen. When, when we have a large unit like that, we don't know what's going to happen.
Okay. So I'd like to have Jim make a copy of that so that the board has it. You know, you've certainly given us a lot of materials that I think we want to have the opportunity to take a look. I'd like it at this point maybe to, Jim did, excuse me, did bring the plans and maybe if we could, and I think these are the most current plans that you have right at this moment.
It's the three-family.
So I think, you know, if we could just take a moment just to take a look at, at that, I think that would be good. And again, that, with that in mind and an opportunity to, to look at this and kind of digest this, I think, and then the article that Jim will make for us, I think that would be, that would be helpful for us to, you know, at least to have a little bit of soak time for this here, you know, for the next week or so. But Jim, if you wouldn't mind, maybe just a brief highlight.
I wanted, I need your help.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. And, and thank you.
You want it on the wall or do you want... Yeah, that would be better because we could all...
I think that would be good. Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
Well, Christmas is coming. I know what you're asking for.
Maybe you can kind of walk through the sections.
So, the house has a lot of exterior entrances and the house was built in four sections. And it's, it's just such a beautiful piece of architecture to, to retain in a, in the community. It's, it's being a historic landmark, I'm going to vote for Anya Stanis also, so it'll be, it'll be nice for us to have this in Penfield.
Can you talk a little bit about the historic part?
Absolutely.
Because in your presentation here, nothing was brought up about historic preservation.
Okay. So, Daniel Penfield, and what, what are you going to do? What, what is your plan that will preserve the integrity architecturally, structurally, and foundationally for the town? So Daniel Penfield owned, you know, started Penfield in, in 1820 and this land was bought by, I think it was Jim Joyce or Jim...
Can you just cut to what you're, what you intend to do? We're familiar with the history.
Well, I don't know if anybody has seen anything I've done so far. I mean, it does look better. I rebuilt the entire foundation and that foundation is a block foundation and then there is also a large amount of cobble foundation on the inside that I am in the process of rebuilding right now because the windows, the basement windows were holding it together. So we, we replaced all the basement windows except for the ones that if we took them out, the entire foundation would crumble. And I've got two very light-priced masons that are ready to start right after Thanksgiving.
I'm going to keep redirecting you. What are you proposing to do? Tell us about that and make sure you touch upon the historic preservation, not what you've already done. What do these plans say?
The plans don't say anything about what I've already done.
Right. That's why we don't need to hear about that.
But that has to do with the historic preservation.
Tell us about the plans, please.
So you want, you don't want me to talk about the historic preservation? Because the interior is not covered by historic preservation.
At, at this point, we want to get focused on your plans here for a three-unit, which is what we're talking about.
May I say something about the historical situation of the home? Okay. So this is the first part of the home that was built. And it has an entrance here and an entrance here. So, this is, in these plans was going to be two bedrooms coming into the living area, going through a hallway, two more bedrooms. Now we have another entrance to the front of the house. And another bedroom here. These are all what I would call apartment three. It's five bedrooms. The main house, this is a solid brick wall here. It had one doorway in here. So the main house is not associated with this in any way but through this doorway, which would make the apartment even bigger if I connected it. So we set, we stopped it here and the whole upstairs is another apartment along with which, this living area. So that's apartment two. It has six bedrooms. The white house is apartment three and we captured this room that was part of this space to make this a one-bedroom with a living room, kitchen, and a deck.
Can you give us the square footage of each of them?
I don't know the square footage of each. I'm sorry. I, I, I don't have a ruler and I don't know, but I would, I would say my guess in this is, so this is like 16 by 30. This, I, I honestly don't know. I'm sorry.
And it's two-story besides.
It's two stories.
It's two stories everywhere except for here. So the whole upstairs is the bedrooms.
I'm trying to get ideas to the number of bedrooms in reference to square footage for a unit.
Well, it's, it's, I know the upstairs is 2,700 square feet.
Of one unit?
The entire upstairs?
I need, I'm looking for the square...
Well, 2,700 square feet plus the living room, so one unit is about 3,000 square feet.
Okay.
I, no, I don't think this is...
Because there's 7,000 total, you said, right?
Well, maybe 2,700 plus 300. Yeah. I mean, in, I'm basing this off of the land records, which I have with me, but it's 27 up and 27 down according to the land records.
Okay.
And then plus the white area that...
This, this wasn't...
It's separate.
Counted and we recovered this space in here because this was not usable space at all. We took out all the entrances to the basements except one because I didn't want, I thought there was a risk. I didn't want people going in the basement, except if it's someone who's going to be doing repairs. We're not locking off the basement, there will be access to it and there'll be a door at the bottom of the stairs. There was an entrance to the basement underneath the main entrance that they had closed off and we recovered that. It was very simple to do.
Does each bedroom have a bathroom?
We do. In, in my house too. I love, I think people should have privacy. I, we never had any fights with our kids. I, I mean, I really am looking for a higher-end client. I'm looking for someone that's going to respect the property, appreciate the property.
So, so, not to get too mirrored down here, but if, if I take a look at this, if I, if I say the white building is approximately 1,000?
Yes.
And I, and I say, you know, one unit is approximately 3,000, the other approximately 3,000, that, that's what gets, gets you to your 7,000?
Or maybe just... Or maybe just bad math. Maybe it's more like two, two, three in one, you know? Yeah, maybe it's just bad math.
So.
I mean, I really, no one has ever, even the architect hasn't given me actual square footage.
That's probably the scale though, right? Where we can see what's, in terms of, you know, double the size of the other one.
Right.
So, so there would be three units?
Well, that's what I was approved for, was three units.
Correct. And what you're looking to do is break off the three units into six or five different apartments?
No, but I'm saying, originally I had planned on doing 12 studios. It's a different, a little bit different floor plan. But when I was told that I needed to make it three units, then we rearranged it a little bit so that I could make it three units. I mean, at one time, this space down here was an apartment, a studio apartment. Now it's the living room, kitchen. You come in, I planned on coming in the stairs, I was going to make cubbies along the wall, have six cubbies. Whoever's living there, kids, whatever, I mean, it's, it's a very different market than I was going after. And then they've got the living room, kitchen, there's a sitting room upstairs in the bedrooms.
So if I can, if I can just recap, just to make sure that we're all on a similar page, thank you, thank you Heidi. On a similar page, and that is, is that in one apartment, I won't have the numbers right, but in one apartment, there are six bedrooms. In another apartment, there's one bedroom, and then in the third apartment, there are five bedrooms.
Right.
So we have a total of 12 bedrooms.
12 bedrooms.
That is, that you're proposing within three apartments.
Correct. And I did think about it again and thought, okay, well, if I was going to reduce it and try to change it a little bit around, I could probably bring it down to 11 units, 11 studios. But it's hard to do anything else with the space because of the way the house is built, the physical structure.
Okay.
And this is just one article I found that could lead to the type of client base that would end up living in a six-bedroom apartment.
Okay. I think this would be, you know, some good general information for the board to take a, take a look at. All right. Board, other questions? You go ahead, Mary.
I would like to go back to historical status because.
Okay, yes, thank you for that.
No disrespect to you, but I think it is important to understand that this house was built in 1850 and the mason that is repairing the grout on the outside, the mortar on the outside of the brick, has the special tool that gives it the design. I mean, everything is being done back to its original standard. So I think it's very important to understand that I respect this building. I have had the actual original windows restored and they're still working on them. I mean, I'm not coming in and just putting some, you know, Home Depot linoleum down, throwing it down so I can just throw this thing together and just get some bodies in here, which is what the people who bought it were going to do. I want to respect the building and it's a beautiful building and it's going to last a long time. It's double-layered brick walls. I mean, it's a beautiful building, but I want to be able to have the opportunity, have the kind of client that's going to respect the building too.
Mary, you had mentioned to Tony and I in our discussion with you the other day that, and you brought up a little bit earlier about the fact that you won't be there forever, none of us will.
No.
One of the thoughts were that possibly if you can come to an arrangement with the board on certain types of restrictions as to how it can be used, that can be put in place for, you know, you are successors and heirs and assigns for that property. That might help the process. Is that something that you're interested in doing?
If we can make small units, yes. I think if you restrict me to the three units, I will not be able to control who lives in there. It's discrimination. You know, I won't be able to say, you know, I once bought a piece of property that said, no Negroes, no Jews, no Italians, and lived in Connecticut, in my home, in my deed, it said that. I mean, we can't do that. We can't say, you know, no, no this, no that. Because when I rent an apartment, I won't furnish the three family. I mean, I'm not going to invest my furniture in a situation where who knows what's going to happen to it. But if it was the studios, I definitely would, would be very interested in coming up with a plan of the, it would be a business. What, you know, like, if you're selling, if you have a pharmacy, then the pharmacy has a certain structure and what you can sell in the pharmacy. You're not selling alcohol, you know, you're not selling, you can sell rubber, you're not selling brandy in a pharmacy. So, you know, we come up with the structures, is what is the, what does the building do? But I, it has to be legal too.
Okay, all right. Board, we have a lot of materials certainly to look at and digest. We do have the current plans and you have those in-house, Cass, right? For that. Board, is there any clarifying questions, at least at this point, to add to the materials that Mary has given us this evening? So I think.
I guess, just one question.
Sure thing, Rob.
Would you have then, logistically, would there be 12 individual leasing contracts, one per bedroom?
If I make studios? Yes, I would do that.
Okay, yes.
I can even bring it down to 11 if, that would be more amenable. I've thought about it all day, like, you know, what else could I do? I would do 12 different, I would be renting to 12 different individuals. In my, in my contracts in Vermont, you cannot have overnight guests without permission. You cannot have any pets. And my tenants are adults, they're professionals like you people sitting in this room.
It's a good point you made though earlier in that, even though I certainly appreciate and it's obvious the care you're taking, we, any changes to this, to this building are forever. And so we have to be owner-blind as to the changes we're going to make because it's going to go with the land. So I appreciate everything you said, who you rent to and everything, but we need to be owner-blind when it comes to these types of changes.
Right. It's much better to have a small unit that can be afforded by someone who's making an income that's $50,000 a year than to have a unit where you may potentially have a number of people coming together or.
The property turns over and you've got a rooming house.
Well, you don't have a rooming house if you have separate apartments. It's not a rooming house.
12 different.
If you have 12 separate apartments, it's not a rooming house.
Well, I think that's why we talked about the idea of, and you're right, you have to look at not so much who's there today, but who's going to be there 50 years from now or 30 years from now. And that's why we talked about the idea of placing controls or covenants on the property, restrictions on the property as to how it's leased and, you know, you're certainly not going to discriminate from anybody, but I mean, certainly if you're going to have a criteria for how you live there, you're not going to go in and bring your own furniture in, you're not going to do this or that.
Right, right.
You're not going to have overnight guests. Those kind of controls you can put in place forever if you want to, I mean, if that's the case.
So, so again, having it be more where a bunch of people come together and rent a place, like, I'm thinking my market would be these college students, you know, they get six friends together. I have a house in a college town and I don't take friends because I don't want parties. I don't like to do that. But in that specific situation, I'm not restricted to have three apartments. You know, that's a house. So I'm always very hesitant when a bunch of people say, you know, we want to rent the house together because you could have 30 people there. I mean, you can't tell them, then, you know, you can't have your friends over and, you know, that, there could be all kinds of stuff going on, parties and.
Yeah, I think our focus is more on the structure. I really, my discussion is not about who's going to live there.
But it should be, considering who's going to live there. It should be. What kind of.
I see what you're dancing around and it's not my consideration.
I'm not trying to dance though. I want to be real. This is a serious consideration. If you make a unit that can accommodate one individual, you're not going to get 30 people coming over having a beer blast. You get a 3,000 square foot apartment, you could have a lot of people in there.
Okay. So we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of good information, so thank you for that.
Oh, you're very welcome.
We appreciate it. Heidi, again, was kind enough to make a copy of this article, so I would just ask who doesn't have that to get that and give us certainly an opportunity. If we have any additional questions, we'll route those through Jim Costello to Mary if the board needs any additional, has any additional questions or needs any additional information. And then this will give us an opportunity to kind of digest all of the information in addition to what we heard at the public hearing and in addition to what we heard this evening. And we'll, we'll stay connected through Mr. Costello and we'll keep you posted when this will be back on the agenda, probably on the 28th is what I'm thinking of this month.
The 28th of November.
8th of November.
That's wonderful. Very nice. Thank you all.
All right.
For your time, I appreciate it.
So thank you very much. Have a great Thanksgiving. And again, if we have any other questions, we'll ask Jim if he would follow up with you accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Got everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you again, Mary.
Oh, you're doing great.
We'll move on to our action items and our first action item is the Irene Gossen Park grade and fill permit request. And this is off of Five Mile Line Road. We'll welcome our next guest. Good to see you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Valentine, I'd ask that you further tee this up for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I've been working with Mr. Farrell, was with us this evening from the Genesee Land Trust. They are working on or looking to add a small parking lot on some property across from Roethlis Park called the Irene Gossen Nature Preserve. So similar fashion to why, how we handled the Wickham Farms, we did a grade and fill permit for their gravel parking lot there. So I provided their initial letter. The seeker information is provided. And then on page three, you can kind of see their proposed gravel parking lot. It's not proposing a new curb cut off of Five Mile Line, it's kind of coming off an existing driveway. And then have a small 40 by 40 gravel lot that people could park there and then pipe into the property. The second page kind of shows an overall aerial of the area and then I, the second piece that I passed out just kind of shows ours, our property for property lines, just for reference on that.
So you're providing updates to.
Yeah, I'm Kevin Farrell, I'm with Genesee Land Trust. We've worked on a few different properties in Penfield nearby is the Hipbrook Preserve off of Jackson Road and Broome and Phaeton. And then work with a variety of different community groups to get people outside and conserve by their working farmland or nature preserves like this. This nature preserve here, the Irene Gossen Nature Preserve, is a piece of land about 20 acres, like 18.08, that is going to be donated to Genesee Land Trust from Mindy McLaren later this year. And we would like to open this up as a nature preserve. Mindy has been maintaining some trails for people to recreate at. And this proposal for a gravel parking area, again, would be off of the lot to the south, which is also owned by Mindy McLaren. And we would have an access easement from that driveway to this small lot. And again, four-car is sort of what we envision, something small, because we don't envision being a lot of people there. It's mainly for neighbors and others nearby. If you notice all the, you know, the residential development to the north, west, and south, just a place for people to get outside. And if there are, you know, events where we bring in a naturalist or, you know, bird expert or something, parking across the street at Roethlis Park, there's ample parking opportunities. And it's just a new property that we want to open up to the public and this would be the first step to have some parking.
How many parking spaces?
Envision four. I mean, it's this, the design that I shared, you know, being that 40 by 40 is, you know, an estimate I got from a construction company and then a fairly long driveway just to get it out and away from the property to the south there. And then just sort of tuck it in there where there is already a trailhead, the property's not open to the public just yet. But I envision having, working with Eagle Scout from Penfield to put simple split rail around it to make it look nice and keep in with the character of the area. And that's pretty much it, the plans for now. Maybe at some point, having a engraved wooden sign at the front, similar to other parks in the area. And, yeah.
Are you thinking of taking that building too?
No, we will never own that building, no.
I was just wondering because you need more parking.
Yeah, and that's, the plan really, if you see on the parking lot site sketch, the one that's in color, the aerial image there, we envision, let's see if I have another. So we envision, yeah, having that driveway come off of that existing lot and then putting a fence, just a yellow fence or something on Mindy's property there as well so people aren't continuing to drive around there. I don't know what the plans are for that property, but this is something how we thought would be an easy way to get some parking for the property that's not directly off of Five Mile Line Road, just because how busy it can be there.
Kevin, you bring up an interesting point. So what is the long-term plan if 1665 is no longer owned by Mindy?
Well, I think, you know, working on getting an access easement for the property there would be the plan. And, you know, someone else in our, in our office is sort of working through, you know, the finer points of the acquisition with Jim on sort of having RG&E easements lifted, town easements lifted on the property, but securing that access easement would be the way we would deal with that at this point.
Yeah, just for your information, the Tyler Board did release the two documents that you requested.
Yep, I did see that, thank you.
We had a previous property maintenance agreement for an improved daycare at that property. We still have a drainage easement that we want to keep in place that is over the creek through the property, so we did not ask for that to be abandoned.
That is correct. And that was something that I know at least several just wanted to make sure that we kept in place in the event that there, any work needed to be done for that.
Which is similar with our Hipbrook Preserve. You know, the town comes in every so often, which is, you know, works fine. I mean, that's, that's easy for us, there's minimal disturbance when that occurs.
And you're absolutely right, you should get a cross-access agreement for changes to that property.
Yep, yep.
And they do have frontage on Five Mile, so if everyone abandoned that access easement, they could work with the county DOT to get a full curb cut off of the road.
Right. And sort of the donor intent here too is not that it's going to be a big park. We've got a big park right next door for people playing games, you know, more sports teams. This is more for, you know, going for a walk with your dog, getting the kids out, you know, having some interpretive signs throughout the property about, you know, why this is important for wildlife, why people need green spaces in addition to, you know, homes in the surrounding areas.
So 1651, is that, that's RG&E?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so is there an arrangement right now with RG&E sort of for access over that land by trails or is it going to be staked out in a way where the property lines are delineated to those who access the property?
So currently, there's, you know, that land is owned by RG&E and they do not have any infrastructure on the property. Again, that was sort of put in place with, you know, idea of that daycare center in 2007. I believe with, with the current landowner, Mindy McLaren, they have an agreement that if she wanted to, you know, mow and maintain that, that's fine. And, you know, when it turns over to the land trust, you know, my preference would be sort of keeping it sort of open meadow like that because there's a lot of habitat benefit to that. And then working with RG&E for some type of agreement to sort of keep it as a continuous parcel with the other piece.
And Kevin, what, when, what do you have planned for start date and completion?
Yeah, good question. And that's, it's a little bit in flux right now with some of the.
Snow?
Variety of different things. You know, the hope was, you know, before the snow really flew, to get in to have this gravel parking lot constructed. really flew, to get in to have this gravel parking lot constructed. I know this, this Eagle Scout's emailing me every other week to come in and get his project done. And when I met a few weeks ago with the construction group, they thought they could get it done, again, before, before the end of the year. If, you know, it gets drawn out and it's, it's not possible, then that'll be a spring-type thing. We hope to do a community opening at the property sometime next year. So depending when all the acquisition pieces fall into place, plans would move on, you know, based off that.
Okay. Or are there questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Okay. I'll ask staff, any additional comments, input the board should be aware of that's not already into the record that should be part of the record?
There are wetlands on the property, but this is remote of those wetlands.
Yeah, they're kind of the wooded area that's to the southwest. It's not in it. It was delineated a few years ago when the daycare went in, and then it was redelineated. Most recently, there's another group that was looking to go in there, and there was some...
Yeah, I think in, so those packets that I passed around, there's one additional map that just sort of shows where the wetlands are. You know, were delineated in some of the other features, a Penfield Open Space Term Easement to the west, and pretty much that's it. So, you know, at this time, it's really just trails throughout the property in the future. It could be, you know, more interpretive trails through the woods and sort of go from there. But we take all our properties as sort of, you know, we're going to own them forever, so sort of managing them for the community's interest and, you know, how many people use the property and what they're interested in doing out there.
Mark, was there anything unusual, different than our standard grade and fill, and anything we could put in there?
No, it's just, we're working with them to submit all the stuff. We have the seeker documentation. He's actually submitted the fee already, so we have that. It was just a matter of getting them on the agenda and...
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, further, further discussion by the board? Again, one last opportunity for staff or applicant, any additional comments, questions, or otherwise? Okay, seen none of those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approved. We'll document this, I mean, certainly as part of the minutes, but we'll document this in a, in a letter back to the applicant. So we have that, they have that for their records. We have that for our records as well.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
We'll move on to our next action item. That action item is with regards to a contract with Community Champions to address property compliance across the town. And so this passed last week, a week ago, town attorney, staff, Heidi and, and Mr. Costello, myself, had a conference call with Community Champions. They're a group that have been working on, with communities. They work with over 200 communities across the US. They work with banks, property owners, that have issues around foreclosures. What we learned is that in the town of Penfield currently, we have 133 foreclosures. We have an additional 61 that are pre-foreclosures that, that are out there. They've had tremendous amount of success locally. They've worked very closely with Grease and Gates overall. The money that has been brought in as part of their fee, working with banks in Grease, has actually funded an additional position for code enforcement. Essentially, there's no upfront cost for the town of Penfield. The town would have to go through and put an ordinance in place. Draft ordinance has been submitted to the attorneys for their review. I think I sent to the board as well, so that you have that. There is also a contract that they have. That contract, once, once it reviewed and approved by the town attorneys, if the board were so inclined, we could pass a resolution and authorize myself to sign that. And then they would work closely with Heidi and her team to get up and running and start to get some of these issues that have been ongoing problems in the town, working through the banks to get a number of them corrected. So, back from our team, Heidi, Jim, myself, Pete Weishaw, the recommendation to the board would be to pursue moving forward with setting a public hearing for the new ordinance for that. We'd look to, our recommendation would be to get a resolution in for December 5th and to set a public hearing for as soon as we could within that timeframe with legal limits with advertising, hold the public hearing, and then from there, move forward with an adoption of that. So our recommendation to the board would be to move forward with that and get that, so as we're moving out into 2019, we can aggressively work at getting some of these issues that Heidi and her team are working on and having little success at times and putting a lot of hours in to work with this group to make, to make that a lot more efficient and a lot better for the community. So I guess with that, I might open it up. Mr. Costello or Heidi, if you have any additional thoughts or comments, would welcome those into the record.
Well, just to reflect on what you stated, we've had a difficult time for clear out these zombie homes, foreclosure homes. Who's even controlling them? Andy and I are working on one right now on Jackson Road, which has been miserable. We thought we had it resolved, and now it looks like it's going back into foreclosure. It's good to be able to have this company go in and talk to these banks and talk to these lending institutions who are overseeing these properties. Lots of times, you can't get access to them. And they have the ability to do that. It gives us the ability to have them maintained and...
How does it work, just briefly? Like, how, how do they...
They, they have...
How do they make money? How do they, how are they funded?
They generate, yes. They, they receive money for the work that they do through the process. And we, we work with them.
From Texas?
So, no. So from, from an ordinance, from an ordinance standpoint, what happens is that those, they identify the banks that have these properties. Those banks and their success rate, very high to get money in typically. And I think their recommendation was $300 so per property.
For the escrow, some?
And that will come in from the bank. And a portion, a portion of that would be used for the fee for Community Champions. So the bank would be paying the fee for Community Champions. They would be doing, they would be doing the legwork with the banks to get things moving along, get things fixed, try to get...
So are they a not-for-profit? Is that like...
No, they're for profit.
But they need to, they need an ordinance.
That is correct. That is correct.
To benefit to us.
You know how you have to pay the resolution every time somebody's lawn has to get mowed?
Yeah.
You won't have to do that anymore. This will be able to...
I was just confused as to how it works.
This will put them in a position where it won't happen in cases where they're not in foreclosure. You still may have to do that. But if they're in foreclosure or going into foreclosure, they have access to all the lending institutions who are overseeing these properties. They know the people that they have to talk to about getting the lawn cut, the building painted, or whatever the case may be. And then if they don't do that...
And the banks pay them to do it?
The banks are penalized for not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
So, I'm sorry, anything else that you have? Heidi, anything else that you'd like to add?
It went over very nicely.
Okay, very, very good. So our recommendation would be, you know, the vote would be for us to prepare in conjunction with our attorneys, the model ordinance for the town. Have a resolution for December 5th to hold a public hearing in either December or early January. And then to move forward with adoption and, in a contract with Community Champions, to move forward to assist our building department. And they'll, they'll, they'll work with, they've got the program. We'll get it added to our system. And they'll be able to go in and work with and provide information and data to them to help address the various foreclosures we have across the town.
Good. I make a motion that we pursue doing the model ordinance.
Okay.
Working with this organization.
Yep.
I'll second.
Thanks.
And this is to set the public hearing?
This is to prepare and then to set up a hearing for, for that. Obviously, as we, as we get further into that, if there's other items, we'll make sure we bring those back to the board. All right.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to motion a second, additional conversation, discussion. Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you for that. I think this will give our team a real help as we move forward with this. Our third action item is community center roof replacement and a bid review update. And Mr. Tate has joined us, snowflake.
As you know, late in 2017, early 2018, we began the first phase of the community center roof replacement. All of the roof, as it was kind of built in different additions and whatnot, at a varying age. So we'd kind of gone through to determine what sections needed to be done first and prioritize it. The smaller section that was above the gym and the cafeteria, we did this past spring. It was about 6,500 square feet. That was the first phase. We're now on to the second phase. We just had the bid opening this past Friday. Three bidders did submit proposals for the work. This portion of the, or this phase is approximately 38,000 square feet. So it's certainly bigger than the, than Phase One. And the numbers, as you can see, came in. The kind of base number was to do just a 60 mil roof with a 20-year warranty. But we also wanted to, you know, up at giving the, given the cost of doing a roof replacement and the minimal upcharge to provide a, you know, better warranty and a slightly thicker roof, wanted to kind of throw that out as an option as well. Back, I wanted to touch base and see, you know, what familiarity Jim Crackman, our facilities foreman, had with the companies that bid. Spring Sheet Metal and Roofing, as the low bidder, did actually do some work for the town back in 2013. Although it was a smaller project, they did complete the flat roof over on the MAC building. And as far as we all know, there have been no issues or leaks to date.
And that was within budget, I take it?
Yep. So they are a large company, done a lot of work. Jim certainly had more familiarity with them than I have, but he was comfortable, you know, with their work and their reputation.
The JB Insulations, they were the second low bidder. They were the one that did Phase One of the roof at the community center earlier this year.
Yep.
In 2018. And then this, the board recalled, we went out for bid this time with the idea that get it first in the queue, get the best prices for 2019. And any work on, on the roof would come out of the 2019 budget. And if I recall correctly, when JMB provided that work, this board actually upgraded to the 25-year roof.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
Was that also done on time and...
Yes.
Yep, it was.
So the intent would be to do, you know, this work come springtime, once the weather breaks, not knowing when exactly that may be.
Absolutely.
Not very optimistic, huh? You could say March 1st.
It's more May 1st. I'm thinking like May.
Yeah.
So, okay. And your recommendation, as it was before, your recommendation is to, to take the uplift going to the 75 mil and the 25-year warranty?
Yep.
Further questions for Mr. Tate?
I'll make a motion that we award the contract to Spring Sheet, Sheet, Mel, and Ethan.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seen no further discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Now, your next task is find the switch, shut it off, and don't turn it back on until, well, Christmas Eve. All right. No pressure. We'll move on to informational items. Our first item is the Panorama Trail Project Status. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. It's been a little while since this has been back before the boards. Just wanted to provide a update. When this, this is the Sumcat property, mostly the former Hilton Hotel site. It's been many things, Camp Hackamo, as well as many different proposals. Most recently owned by Dutch Summers. Came before this board and got a grade and fill permit to establish a road going up the hillside, clear some areas, open it up. That work has been done. That's completed. And the most recent information we heard is that they're looking to pursue office space. They're looking at a Lyndon Oaks kind of feel to it. We've not seen any plans, not seen anything more formal with that. But if they stay in that vein, actually, we go to, it'd be a planning board application. Under the current limited industrial zoning, office space is allowed, so it would fall under a permitted use. They've also said if and when somebody else wanted to come in and do something different, you know, as far as some townhouses or other options, you know, obviously, they may have to come back to this board for, you know, rezoning of particular areas. But at this time, they didn't have anything that they're proposing with that. Again, have not seen any plans or anything final, but just kind of want to provide this board an update that you've been dealing with this so long, and all of a sudden, something comes back, is why is it not back before us? Or where is it? What happened to it? So I just kind of let you know, you know, what happened with the grading and clearing and that project and stabilizing that. You know, I think they just finished the access road in on the lower portion, transitioning off of the thermal official property. So they were trying to, you know, complete that transition. They've traded the properties, done the plat map and the land transfer. So they're kind of on their way with that, but obviously, still working on some design plans. So surely an informational item, just a status update for the board, just to kind of let you know what's going on.
No, no action, purely just informational. Okay. Any questions for Mark? Concerns, issues? Okay, thank you, Mark. Move on to our second informational item. This is Baytown Plaza Property Maintenance Agreement, or Agreements, plural. I see Mr. Calucci and the team in the audience. You're welcome to come to the table. You're the only smart ones in the audience. Leave your coats on.
So just wanted to bring to the board's attention that three different documents going on, I kind of paperclipped them together. Two property maintenance agreements, and the last is a kind of an aerial overlay of where those property maintenance agreements fall. Recently, this board's heard from some residents with concern about noise, amplified noise, stuff going on in the area. You know, we continue to work, as we do all over the place, with, you know, early garbage and other stuff. But one of the items that just came up was the amplification or noise off a property. And the property maintenance agreement that we actually have a reference to it, actually falls under, if you go to the last page of the two agreements, is Exhibit B, and then you've got to flip over. So Exhibit B of the second one falls on this back property. So Exhibit B, under the Schedule of Maintenance, limits the outdoor amplification, outdoor speaker system, fell just on what is basically the Walmart property. That was the condition of this board. Order to rezoning was to limit that. But the property maintenance agreement we have on the Baytown Plaza as a whole, plus the new expansion area to the north, which was Building O, falls under what was the original property maintenance agreement, which does not have any limitation over that outdoor amplification. So just one...
Mark, that was done at the time that the Tops property was divided up and...
Yeah, so that was, that was prior to, you know, the Walmart piece and the expansion with that. But thought that was an important clarification for this board, because you've been getting some information about noise and everything else and limits of hours of operation. Obviously, we work closely with the, you know, developers as well as the, you know, our code enforcement officers, and wanted to make sure, you know, everybody's on the same page of what the limitations are, what really is in the record, what the legal requirements are. So, because as they came in originally, and I can let them explain more, there was discussion about some outdoor activities in that green space. And they came in and wanted to make that an active area that you could have a farm market and you could have, you know, events going on in that area. So there is no prohibition over, you know, outdoor noise or activities, you know, fall under normal ordinance of hours of operation and stuff, as the rest of the community does. But there is no specific limit over the...
How's it work for, like, a regular, like, a restaurant wants to have a special event, they get, like, three times a year?
They come into the zoning board.
So how does it work in this property? Is it, like, Witchcraft Row had that event. Is that considered Baytown, or is that... Is it, like, Witchcraft Row had that event, is that considered Baytown or is that special?
They had to come in for that event, that special event, as you referred to, the three times a year.
Right. But is it the business or is it the overall landlord?
The business in that case, but in this case, the landlord would like to conduct community events in meeting with us. They talked about a farm market, as Mark suggested. They've been actually having events such as children's movies at night, that kind of thing. But they'd like to expand upon that a little bit and have other types of events out there. They didn't specifically state that they were going to have the Rolling Stones there, but we expect at some point in time you might have Gary the Happy Pirate or something like that there with some type of amplification.
Would there still be three times? Do you want to talk about something?
No, the reason why they're really here tonight, and the reason why Mark's explaining this to you, is because they've actually applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals and in any more of the meeting tomorrow night, to ask for a conditional use permit to allow this to occur on a sustained basis. And it was important for us to let you know, you know, how this is interacting with the property maintenance agreements related to amplification.
So, the property that, so everybody's clear, the property that they're going to the Zoning Board of Appeals for is what I'll call the flagpole, and then that green spot, green space.
Farmer's market.
You know, that is just south, if you will, south of the Verizon building in that area and kind of, kind of west of the Uvar Medical Building, you know.
1970.
It's kind of skewed a little bit, but the basic north and, north and west of type of thing. So, one of the things that, as Mark and I were chatting about this, I thought it was important, you know, based on what there is, some thoughts about the conditions that are here with some residents that have been more active than others, I thought it would be appropriate for me and staff to sit down with that individual or those individuals and make sure that there is an understanding, that there are two, two different components of this, and make sure that there's an understanding of that. I think that would be the right thing to do, so that, again, everybody's on the same page. I'm not saying everybody's going to like where things are, but I think it is appropriate for me to do that. So, just wanted to make the board aware of that, make sure that we had any, if there were any questions for staff, Mark and Cos and Company could address that. And then what I'll plan to do is, right after the Thanksgiving holidays, get time on the calendar with those individuals and sit down and review that.
Okay. Can you guys want to add anything? It was just kind of a clarification request on the board, but if you wanted to...
I think you did a good job of delineating the separate parcels. And the reason that when you did the rezoning and we did the site plan approval for the expansion, when we relocated Walmart to the Grant Point parcel, as we call it, the reason that there was a restriction on outdoor amplification was a concern of this board and planning board, that there might be an outdoor loudspeaker, because they have the garden center, where they might be calling to the garden yard for pickups and what is common in big box retail.
Right.
So, we, that was a restriction which we abide by. And we even went so far as to make a provision that because they have a pharmacy drive-up that could potentially have a very small call box, that was carved out as a restriction in the property maintenance agreement that they're allowed to have...
And we even went back to the planning board for that, very specifically.
A small call box.
Because that could be construed as outdoor amplification.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But we had always desired to explore, and what we're going to do tomorrow night with the zoning board, having Baytown truly be a community center. And that park area that we've created that is undergoing some further improvements right now, as we race to get construction improvements done with the weather, is to have the opportunity in the spring, start community events. And we're going to lay out a whole agenda of community events that we want to host at the center. And there certainly could be a night where there's live music. And we would have to abide by the noise ordinance, but there could be amplification of music. We're not...
How do you communicate that? Because I'm thinking about one of the residents that came to see us, didn't know about, like, the Gilders Club thing happening at Witchcraft and heard the loud music. Well, how do you advertise these events that you would have, would propose to have?
Sure. We have Public Relations Department that is, our hope is going to be working in concert with the town, so that we're able to make these events known, not only to patrons that we want to visit the plaza, but the public at large in Penfield, and also be able to work in concert with the town on their communications relative to events that could be town-oriented, community-oriented, that could be hosted at the plaza. Our Property Management Division, this is Alan Rainbow, who is the property manager, works with our Public Relations Department, and we market the plaza and make these events known. You know, radio, print, media, we try to advertise. We have a marketing fund that all of the tenants within the plaza contribute to, to help make Baytown and all of our commercial plazas as successful as they possibly can be.
Do you have signage on the property, like, out on MR Boulevard or something?
So, signage is another item that we've recently started to expand upon, and one of the signs that we've recently received approval for will be erected before Thanksgiving, we're hoping. There is going to be opportunity to have event-type signage on that, on that particular sign. But it's, it's an effort that takes, you know, a lot of different effort between tenants doing their own marketing and advertising from their own funds, what we do collectively for the tenant base, and what we hope is to establish a relationship with the town, so that Baytown truly is recognized as Penfield, and that it gets its recognition, its notoriety in a very positive manner. We understand there's been some isolated complaints. We ourselves have tried to reach out to those who have complained and been met with a little bit of a cold shoulder, so we're hoping that, you know, collectively, we can put to rest any concerns they have and be the type of community asset that we always endeavor to be.
Well, communicating with Jim is excellent, because, you know, some of the stuff we weren't aware of, and town board members, we should be aware, there's these movies going on, and who knows, maybe somebody might attend. But if you don't even know about it on our level, you know, who's, the residents, they're wondering what's going on, they don't know either. So, you've got to...
Well, you did a lot of family oriented events last summer. Generally speaking, what are you shooting for in terms of hours of operation for those kinds of events? And I'm thinking more of night than day, because I know you do have some day events, but...
Yeah, movie night is obviously going to be more driven by a little bit dusk-type operation, because it's a projector and with daylight, it tends to make watching a movie difficult. But the events, I think the way I wrote it up in the application, Jim, was 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and it would be variable. There would certainly not be every day an event going on there. But we have a calendar of events that we want to roll out, and we're going to talk a little bit about that tomorrow night. And, you know, Farmer's Market would be a daytime event, but if there was a movie night or a live music night, or a tenant like Witchcraft Row wanted to hold an event, we would be able to fall within that type of time constraint during the day. And we're proposing seasonally from May 1st to October 31st, I believe is what we had put in there. The nice weather months. If there's reason to have alcohol permits or something like that, those tenants would need to come in for separate special permits. There would be a typical process to follow.
And this is for the property of 1970? Or which property are you on?
Yeah, so that parcel that we call the developer parcel, or everything north of these street of shops, is actually 1970, Empire Boulevard.
And that's everything from Grant Point Drive, so that's what...
To the flag right here, right here.
Right. Okay.
That rectangle is kind of the green strip in the middle of what will be three or four buildings. The one on the north is already there, and then the two others are future developments coming in.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so this is for information only, so we're aware of the DPA?
Yes, because the area we were tomorrow evening was totally mentioned, there are already divisions and concern, and want to make you aware of what their proposal and what the issues are related to.
And the action we'll take is, I'll follow up with staff and close a little back, you know, with the individuals.
Sure.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice holiday.
All right, you do the same, thank you.
Stay warm.
Thanks, absolutely. All right, there being no further business to come before the board, November 14, 2018, Town Board Work Session stands adjourned at 8:20 PM. The next meeting will be on November 28, 2018.